Barrington coming, Marty?
I assume so. I haven't heard anybody's gonna miss.
You're gonna watch my back?
Yeah.
Okay.
School's open. Pretty much. I don't know.
Busy bull.
My son does.
Okay, so does my husband do.
Okay, sure.
Okay, I think, yeah.
Calling me or start with pledge of allegiance?
It's over there. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its people, regardless of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Salvation Army? Okay, not here. Roll call, please.
Sabers.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
McCartell.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
How come you're louder than everybody else?
One.
We have a quorum.
Well, we got a second.
Nobody else heard us. Uh, executive session. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session according to South Dakota codified law 125-23, consulting with legal counsel. Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. McCartell. Further discussion? Anybody know who I wish to address it? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. We'll enter into executive session in my chambers.
I would say Jesse, Heather was the one I worked for. Maria's dish is my cardiologist. And but her husband Adam is the one that did my cardio. And then there's Tom with the butter lot.
That's my oldest, that's my youngest.
Jesse. Yes, yeah, she is the one that's been in your hair.
Yeah, and thanks to her hair is curly.
She said to me, I totally wasn't going on, she goes, oh, you've set yourself lined up for a back carry EKG, doing what you said, like, oh yay. And I was talking to her about Maria, and she goes, oh yeah, she remembers you. Yeah, my partner. But, oh yes, you guys.
I don't know, she, that's her hair.
I think, it was called bad. Yeah, it's a special one, I'm not interested.
Yep. It does.
Oh. They forgot it was my hair on Wednesday.
There you go.
I really just need to marry God.
Same time.
So one is near you and one is farther down?
Yeah. And that's.
Yeah.
Better, yeah. The other one.
For doing. Who's this?
Yeah, I won't edit it.
And you are Brenda's brother. Brother Matt. Oh.
Yeah. Know that I'm sold, you know, a couple of hours. Show that card.
Something with a voice that's only being that's then you're ready to pull out. That's what's good.
Yeah, we like it. It's a little bit easier, but.
Always good stuff. So, um, David, like, you know, that you have the big white fence? If you were to have to see.
Yes.
So we live in the house, but we did not have to. That was our house. There's a house on the baby for sale now. How about me? He lives, he lives with me. Yeah, I live up by. Just, yeah, a little bit. About my, half my way. You have garb? Up that way, on the green, it's the style. Isn't that housing? Oh, you know, we're on Riverside with the old school houses, yes. You just. That's where else? Big one, go away, or you couldn't stop by me?
No, I would love.
Sixteen acres.
I'd need to find you the place right away. Didn't need the biggest house, because the house was far.
Yeah. My location's awesome, isn't it?
Yeah, it isn't too bad up there.
I have a.
You know, I liked that.
Old school house, that'd be cool to make.
If I was, I know, that's what I thought.
That'd be great.
I'd try to buy that.
Oh. See, it doesn't stop. Oh, God. Oh, there. It's by, it's by Mickey House, but. So my house is. The history aside, and then, so, there's that. Old school house is right there.
Yeah. What was that, Maple Creek? I don't know.
So this is Clap Town. Then I guess Dan Allen shed. Clap Town Associates.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's their house. That's Dan Allen's shed. That's my house. Is my area. And then.
Because Nicholas was in the house, and they fell, they sold it.
And then, right here, this is the house. From 414. Something?
That's it? The sixteen acres?
Yeah. I think.
Really?
But I think if people would help like. Because these people are horrible people, and their dogs, and the fans, those people I do enough, their dogs roam our country. And people that. They're sort of both people. They, they don't. Yeah, they're bad people.
Two thousand, two hundred percent.
I don't know, it's usually a lot less. But it's all just land right here.
Okay, we're out of executive session. Approval of consent agenda items, items appearing on consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Is there anything you wish to remove?
Um, nothing to remove, but, um, Michelle or Stephanie comment on that we have two months of sales tax numbers now that look like maybe we've evened out a little bit, going from way plus to just, I mean, I still like that we're plus, but.
Don't settle into those two.
I, and I. Right. Already sent a comment about the watch, especially March, April, and May, as we're in the current economic situation, but.
Right, in January, our sales tax was twenty point, twenty-six point six three. At that time, we noted for council that we figured that that number was not an accurate number, and you can see this month, it's much more adjusted to three point two five percent. And again, who knows what that will look like in the coming months, but that's where we are now.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion?
One, one thing, and Kyle, on the, the water distribution, we had, we didn't go over any amounts. Are we closer in our negotiation for our alternate source, or backup source, or whatever we want to call it, or is that a, sometime this calendar year, we might have more discussion on that?
Yes, sir.
Turn it on. Look at the bottom.
Hold the button until turn three.
Yell. Oh, I forgot. He, he can come up there.
Yeah. He need to get up there. That works.
That one works.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
That one doesn't work.
Do them out here. Take mine. Mine ain't gonna need it. Oh, here, just sit right here. Oh, gee. We should get her a chair. Oh, no matter.
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, we, that will be done this calendar year. Um, we do have a few more, uh, we have a little bit more information to gather from our consultant, but they've done a great job on, on communicating some options and some alternatives that we might have for a secondary water source. Uh, we're working with infrastructure design and A2S, and, um, and, and so I'm looking to, to get that, uh, those consultants in, in front of you to discuss that within the next few months.
Okay, anything else? Okay, roll call vote, please. While anybody in the ice wish to address any of these? Okay, roll call vote.
Dosher. McCartell.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address the mayor, members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no actually be taken this time. Before we get started on this, I am a little remiss. I want to introduce our new human resources director, Elizabeth Kitchens, to everybody. She spent the day getting used to all this fun stuff, so. Okay, anybody wish to address board?
John Williams, utility superintendent. Uh, just want to bring up a couple things due to coronavirus concerns. As many of you know, there has been some toilet paper shortages at the local stores here in town and nationwide. This brings up a concern to us that people will be using alternative baby wipes, um, all sorts of other wipes, and just reminding the public, they do not belong in the toilet. Um, they may say they're flushable, but they do not break down. They can cause sewer plugs in your service. Worse yet, they can cause sewer meat in the backup laundry levers. So please, uh, be advised that they do not belong in the city's sanitary sewer. And we have added a couple things to the city website explaining, a couple sites you can go to, once the public works, and once the council, they kind of explain some of the coronavirus concerns and the, uh, things not flushable, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council?
I'll speak quietly since my mic is really loud.
You can go across the room and talk.
Hello? Um, I had a question from, um, someone about, actually, they started out by commending the city on, um, the recycling program that we have in place, and then they asked if I would find out what Millennium's, um, take was on how Mitchell is doing. So I sent that message to Kyle, who sent the message to the people, Bruce at Millennium, and the response was, um, that Mitchell is doing a fantastic job. Keep up the good work, and we look forward to even more material from you guys. So, um, they said the quality of material for Mitchell is some of the best they've received, so we are really good recyclers. So, just wanted to give a little shout out to those that are responsible for this program, and really commend the community for jumping on board and embracing this so much. Um, I think that, that it speaks highly of the program that you got in place, so.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Okay. Board of adjustment entertain a motion for the city council recess, citizens board adjustment. Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Hearing and action on Tracy Fink, seven twelve east fourteenth. Tracy Fink has applied for condition, use permit to operate a family residential childcare center in her home at seven twelve east fourteenth, legally described as lot nine and east forty feet of block eight, block four, North Ridge Edition subdivision, city of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota property is zoned R two, single family.
Mayor, council members, the government's plan, you should, uh, the, they recommend a curable, for the three conditions, one, that they ask a fire secondary, uh, two, that they permit non-excurable, three, is if she's operating, or period, six months longer than any permitted fire, uh, this, uh, that this act, she had previously had a childcare center in San, kind of, for, so, and no name or objective.
Move to, move to approve it, the conditions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barrington, second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion?
I just want to say there are a lot of lucky little kids that are gonna be going back to Tracy's house, so, this is good.
Okay, all those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Reconvene the city council, entertain a motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn reconvene, uh, city council reconvene regular session?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mrs. McCartell. Further discussion? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Hearing and action on application of Big Friend, Little Friend in the Mitchell area for a special event liquor malt beverage license located on Main Street by closing the following, south Main Street from Second South to the depot, as well as railroad from half block west of Maine to east of Maine to Lawler, include both city and Mitchell parking lots, south of First Street and Railroad Street, also request closing the alley on the west parking lot and allow the use, allow to use the adjoining city gravel parking lot between the alley and the public safety storage building, also to obtain a special liquor license, consumption, consumption and noise permits, poker run permit, and associated cost for the Memorial Weekend in Mitchell and barbecue cookoff on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Tell us your name and give us.
I am Daniel Schreger, formerly of the Evangelist Hill, and now helping Big Friend, Little Friend, and with me, Jean Haley, the executive director for Big Friend, Little Friend. Uh, this is the event we've been doing for the past eighteen years, uh, last night, our table, the big festival downtown. Um, at the end of last year, the Evangelist Hill has decided to turn this over to Big Friend, Little Friend, helping, I bet, it's gonna put money towards a deal in the town to help children with the memory program. Nothing has changed since the last year, it's pretty much the same thing we've been doing, and asking for, we have before, with some help in the expenses, to bring it back down to the eight hundred dollar range for us to be able to help, a little more profit towards the Big Friend, Little Friend program.
Okay, and? Any questions? Or motion?
Uh, Jean and I spoke with you kind of when I walked in. Um, so, taking over this, the manpower and that type of stuff, can you kind of tell us how that's gonna work out? I, it's been a great event, I think, and I just want to make sure that it continues, or at least has the same amount of volunteer support, at least.
Yes, um, so, we were asked by the Evangelist Hill, um, to consult, maybe, or so, to consider taking it over on our board, and therefore, several times, several of us were at the event last May. Um, most, um, all of the planning, maybe, people that were doing the event, part of it for Evangelist Hill, started poker run, dancing, bar, um, car show.
Car show.
All of those people staying on the floor.
Okay.
And gonna go forward, so, maybe that was a must for us to do, so, um, yeah, we're excited about it, we're excited that all of those people stay.
We, we do have one concern that I called Justin today, with coronavirus issue going on, I have a question, and if, for some reason, we have to postpone this event, it continues, what would be the process for us to move it to a different date? Do we have to redo a liquor license and everything, or do we transfer this? Hopefully, we don't have to worry about it, but announce it by the past before the sale.
I think you'd have to move it, or you'd have to redo this, wouldn't you, Justin?
So, what I advised earlier was that if, uh, there was time to get in front of a, in front of the council again, if there was gonna be another meeting, uh, in between there, then we'd just put it back on the agenda, and we could have it reapproved. It wouldn't be a reapplication, but the council could at least adjust.
The dates.
The time periods and dates for it. Um, I guess the only potential problem with that is if they do have a date, um, that would be before the next council meeting, but my guess is if there's going to be a need to delay the event, it's probably going to be longer than a two-week delay, so.
Yeah, it would be more just a next week, or something like that.
I would guess you're gonna know by the first part of May if we're gonna.
I would hope by April, for sure, because a lot of things are being announced until May first, though, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can hope for it.
Believe me, I hope so, too.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCartell.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anybody in the ice wish to address this? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Action to approve purchase of a two thousand thirteen Peterbilt three eighty-four semi-tractor for recycling from the grant funds, project twenty twenty dash six G. Mr. Croce, you're already up here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, yes, this was, uh, initially in our outline back in June of twenty nineteen, for the purchase of this equipment, uh, we had initially estimated about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of semi-tractor. Our folks have looked at, uh, our city availability, there is one that is a two thousand thirteen used Peterbilt, um, semi-tractor over Sioux Falls, uh, for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred, and we would, uh, we would utilize the grant funds that are available, and they were provided us, awarded us, uh, for programs, so, the staff recognizes the city council.
Okay. Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion? Anybody in the ice wish to address this one? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Action award rock chips, project twenty twenty dash ten. Mr. Croce.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so this is the first loan of, of three items that, uh, that we're looking for approval. Um, we have fifty-seven thousand budgeted for the rock chips in the area, uh, that's going to be used for the ship seal, uh, the ship seal program that we have, Spencer Board, it was the, uh, was submitting, uh, better, uh, it was submitted on February twenty-eighth, and, uh, you can see on the second page, uh, the prices back from two thousand ten and up through two thousand nineteen. So, we, uh, staff recognizes the, uh, the award of, 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 to Spencer Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. McCartell. Further discussion? Anybody in the ice wish to address this? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Action award bid for petroleum products, project twenty twenty dash thirteen. Mr. Croce.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so this, this is the petroleum product that's used for the ship seal, fog seal, and also our crack seal product. Um, the bids were, again, provided on February twenty-eighth to the Seale Hall chambers, and we have one bid for Javelin, uh, for the oil chain, and, um, CSS H at the end price. Uh, the other one was for crack seal, uh, for the season. And the box said, uh, you know, the bid scheme high based on the tonnage, we'll reduce those numbers, not go over the budget amount. Um, so, initially, the auction says during seventy-five, we'll use up to three hundred, uh, and any, any other product. And, uh, in the free terms, where should they come from, two, uh, the facts are on the, on the last page, it's that CSS H, uh, and we look closer on our cost to be, uh, the budget.
Can you go all through that all again, Mr. Croce? Okay. All right.
To approve the bid from Javelin.
Motion by Mrs. Charks.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCartell. Further discussion? Anybody in the ice wish to address this? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Action on resolution R twenty.
There's, that would have approved items one and three, correct? So, I will move approval of item two to Midstate Equipment and Supply.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Different, different one. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rice for item two.
And all of the tonnage to bid to, to stay under the budgeted amount. I, potential that you short any work that we might have to do, or you'll just have to play that and come back to us?
Actually, we'll get the, uh, we'll get the exact quantities, but, uh, I think we overestimated, uh, the tonnage. Uh, uh, we did call the.
You sneaky guy.
We did call the, the contractors, and they will honor those prices at, at the lower amounts that, that we had talked about.
Okay.
Okay, so item number two. Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCartell. Further discussion? Anybody in the ice wish to address item number two? All those favor the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Action, excuse me, action on resolution R twenty twenty dash twelve, a plat of lot eighteen A in the tract L of Wild Oak Golf Club Edition in the southeast quarter of section twenty-three township one oh three north, range sixty west of the fifth primary in Davis County, South Dakota. Mr. Putnam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council.
Council, it's on.
Then you got a good call, but you have to go.
Okay. This plat was presented to the planning commission at their last regular meeting, and if you can probably see there on 18A, there's a triangle piece that's gonna be adjacent to it, and also if you see on the aerial, if you see on the aerial photo, you would see that there's two different separate parcels where the property line is. From what I was gathered is 18A is, is going to be part of 18A, eighteen, but 18A is not in the city limits and it's also not zoned residential. So, in order to facilitate those processes, the annexation and the rezoning, you need a legal description, and so that's why the plat is coming first. And then so subsequently, you'll see a, at a later date, an annexation and a rezoning, so. But you kind of, you have to have something to describe it first.
We have to plan it first and then the other things will come, so the next meeting or the next two meetings.
Perhaps, yeah, at some point, yeah, but the county has already approved the plat.
Move approval of resolution 2020-12.
Motion by Mr. Rice. Second by Mrs. Charks, further discussion? Is anybody in the audience wishes to address this one? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried. Action on resolution R-2020-13, a plat of lot 13 of D, Odegaard's first addition, a subdivision previously plaid lot five in Fiala's addition, City Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota.
Again, this plat was presented to the planning commission and did recommend approval. You can kind of see, it pretty much follows the master plan of that subdivision, so.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice, further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, motion carried. Action on resolution R-2020-14, annexation of lot R2A Rising Sun, first edition northwest quarter of section 23 Township 103 North, range sixty west of the fifth primary in Davis County, South Dakota.
Mayor and council members, if you probably nearly noticed in your packet, this is a parcel that is within that proposed avera MADC project. However, this has really, the annexation is probably the something that should be done regardless of that project. However, you probably noticed that there's, there's about, just shy of two acres. Some of you may recall a while back when we did the land transfer between Mr. Goldhammer and the city, and that's what this piece was. So, basically what this is, is just trying to annex that piece in regardless of whatever happens to the project, so that's where you can kind of see right there. So, that's what the purpose is. This property is owned by the city.
Correct. I think, Mr. Croce, this is where the drainage comes out from the pond, correct? Right, right now, city limits ends at the, at that proposed road, you see the narrow strip? That's all in the city limits, but this lot is not, and I think the lot to the north is in the city.
Yeah, anything with a fifteen digit in the front is in the city limits, the six indicates that it is not, so. And you probably saw there's a, there's a copy of the plat that you approved a couple or three years ago in your packet.
Okay. I'll move approval of resolution 2020-14, the annexation of lot R2A.
Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this one? Come up, come up to the microphone. State your name, gotta go through the whole-
Mike Maffey, I live on sixteen sixty, state. Did you say anything with fifteen, city limits sixteen, isn't?
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Okay. He's saying anything that's in, with the, being with number fifteen is in the city limits, sixteen is out, that's not right, because I'm in the city limits.
In this case, that, in this, in this map, this is, that's true, if there might be an error in somewhere else, but yeah, but in this case, we double, we verified that this is not in the city.
Correct, but you said fifteen.
Well, right, and just in this draft, in this demonstration, so. Yep.
Okay. We're motion second, anybody else wish to address it? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried. Action on resolution R-2020-15, a plat of Sam Street, a subdivision previously plaid lot S of Maui Farms, second edition, City Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota.
Again, this plat was presented to the planning commission and they did recommend approval. Basically, it's extending the right-of-way to the, further to the north to facilitate if, the additional transfer or sale of some future lots where you can see where it's a future, so this would be the dead end of that project, so. You may recall that there's some, we've been, you've been talking about improving, or improving that road this summer, so.
Short time ago, we had the improvement of the road to what I would call the south of this. This just extends the road to the north, northwest.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice, further discussion? Is there anybody in the audience wishes to address this one? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried. Second reading of ordinance O-2020-02, an ordinance changing the district classification of real property currently owned by Avera Queen of Peace from UD Urban Development District and R4 High Density Residential District to the Ridge View on Foster Plan Development Districts. Again, this is a rezoning only, not what's attached to the rezon, or what covenances will be associated with this.
I'll just kind of recap a couple things. There were, we have not, there are, the letters that you see in there are the same from last time, we have not received any, I did, since that time, so what you see is what's in the packet. Before you is ordinance 2020-02, again, this is rezoning the, this area to a planned development district. Also on the map, where you saw the master plan, where the only areas that are being rezoned are the subareas A, B, C, and D. The rest of the property is going to remain its existing ordinance, which is R4. And again, the planning commission of two or three meetings ago did recommend approval on a four-to-one vote. I don't know anything else I can add for you, but my guess is there'd be some parties here who can, may express some, have an opinion about it, so. I'll try to answer any procedural questions that you may have, or if you want to, I'll
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Mark Box, Mitchell Area Development. At the last council meeting, you asked us to meet with the neighbors to discuss their latest plan. We have reviewed their plan and we met with them last Thursday. I'd like to call Jeff McCormick from SPN Engineering to share with you his review of
I do also, I don't know if I can reach her out. So, one of the questions that was asked is kind of justify why we had, why we had come up with this layout. So, first thing I'm gonna talk about is, it's kind of highlighted as the yellow on the, see if this works, oh, there it is, on the far right side. So, the reason we had the layout of the street in that location is because there's an existing right-of-way there. There's also an existing water line that runs through that existing right-of-way. So, that was part of the reasons that we looked at the, the street at that location. Next is the green, all of the green shows existing storm sewer that is already in place, including the stormwater detention pond. As of right now, there's no plan for that detention pond to be relocated or moved because it's needed, because the hospital's still there and we want to prevent any flooding of the emergency, emergency room. So, that's a lot of what dictated the design that we had as we went through it and some of the parameters that caused us to come to this, to this layout. If we go to the next slide, this was the layout that was presented by the, by the residents at the last, the last meeting, and I'm gonna go through some of those items, one of them being the removal of the existing right-of-way for two more lots in the far right corner. Second one, I'm not gonna go through in a lot more detail other than right here is this block one in that corner, they were looking at the single-family residential all the way through that area. As you can see, we've got an area that just becomes unused or undeveloped. So, as of right now, we've opened that lot up as just one big block so that we can try to make better use of that entire property rather than just tying the hands to single lots that are, that are much deeper than the, than the rest of them.
Any development of that lot will come back to planning zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that'd be under a conditional use, is that correct or not?
Well, it, it's, right now, it's just one single lot, so if it was get, supposed to get broke up in any other lots, we'd have to-
Sure.
Bring it back.
At least come with, as far as the plat goes, from that, from that standpoint. The next, there's, they've got the alley shown on the very south side of the property. It's, my understanding, the city is not looking at developing any further alleys.
Correct.
I guess we're not gonna go any further into that at this point. And then the next item that was addressing this was this lot, block six, which we'll recall in phase two, because currently the hospital uses that as a parking lot, emergency helicopter pad, and stormwater detention. So, right now, we're not planning, I mean, that's a phase two, we have a master layout, and I'll go through some other options here and review the option that they provided, but I really feel that that's, you know, we don't even know when the timeframe of that is. You know, that's whenever the hospital would be relocated and, and, and we continue on with that next phase of development. So, if I'm getting too far into something right now that you don't want to get into in that type of detail, please let me know. Next slide, this is, this is option one, this is the phase that, that we put together as of right now, is what we consider this being developed. Whether it all becomes single-family or becomes some other type of mixed use or duplexes or something of that nature, that's too far down the road, but to me, this, what we proposed was just a straight road going through to connect to Foster. This one had an estimated cost of about thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars per lot, and we were able to get eighteen lots out of it. Option two, which was the one as presented by the property owners, go ahead to the next slide, step me. This one, they were looking at in a construction of Seventh Street through and wanting that to be done in, in this first phase so that those, those people can exit that as opposed to going on to, on to A Street. With this layout, we have a lot of areas that become undevelopable. The space between these two roads is not enough to actually construct anything, and you can see then, we only end up with twelve lots and our cost per lot goes up substantially, and almost, it almost doubles what that cost would be. Option three, I, I just went a little further into looking at a couple different options, next slide. Kind of like the way the cul-de-sac looked, this would be the most cost-effective method of, of this development in this area. However, I'm thinking public safety would like to avoid this cul-de-sac as well as snow removal, and I think once we get to this phase, another entrance onto, onto Foster Street would be, would be advantageous. But this by far would be the cheapest option that we've looked at so far. And then option number four, on the next slide, it's just kind of trying to connect Seventh Street over to what we had proposed. Now, this option wouldn't be able to occur until the hospital no longer is using their parking lot. This one's not a bad option, I, I don't like some of the lots that it creates, it ends, you know, this lot right here ends up having three sides of it have street on it, this one's, you know, there's just some, there's some weird lots in there that I just don't feel like it's the best lot of, out of the alternatives that we have. So, we did present these options to the residents and talked about them. Briefly, we didn't have a lot of time for our meeting. One of the things that came out of that, that meeting is I got a request for another layout, which is on the next slide, of the possibility of instead of having the street over on the far east where the existing right-of-way is, to connect this street right at Roland.
You said we already have water in that right-of-way?
There is already water within that, within that existing right-of-way, correct.
So, that would all have to get moved if?
Right, it's a transmission line, I would say we would not want, want to move that. To me, while and even at this point, if we didn't construct it, I think it would still remain the city right-of-way, I mean, we could vacate it and give half the land back with easements, but I mean, we can't, we're not gonna gain a lot by doing it, not, we're not gonna gain an actual lot to build on. So, with this option, I guess I, I'm kind of a little missed on, on what's driving it, because they were concerned about all the traffic on A Street, or Eighth Avenue, and that entering Foster Street, well, this still has all the traffic entering Eighth and Foster. But I did look at what the cost was, the next slide, and, and basically, option one being to construct it as we had it shown on this far east side where the existing right-of-way is, and option two of connecting that at that location. So, with this second option, we nearly double the amount of street that we would have, and we can still get the same number of residential lots in here, but now we've cut this block one of undeveloped space nearly in half. So, we've almost doubled the cost and we've, we've cut one developable area in half. So, I mean, and I'm not sure what public safety and public work would say about this wide intersection, I think that would like to be avoided. But there's the options that they, they've asked us to look at. You got any questions regarding the layout? I think this is probably a little bit more detailed than the zoning, but.
No questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. In the spirit of good faith and accommodation, we've met with the neighbors several times. We understand and appreciate their concerns. We've implemented as many of them as we can while maintaining the financial feasibility of this development. They've asked for larger lots on Eighth Avenue, we have done that. They've asked to remove the mixed-use development in the northwest corner, we have done that. They asked for wider setbacks, we're following the existing city ordinance regarding that. They've asked for a buffer along Eighth Avenue, and by Mitchell Area Development donating those eight lots to Mitchell Technical College, we have done that. In fact, Mitchell Technical College built the following homes on Roland Lane over the years. Thirteen hundred, thirteen oh one, thirteen fifteen, fourteen oh one, fourteen oh six, fourteen eleven, fourteen fifteen, and fourteen sixteen. I believe at least one member of our audience tonight still resides in one of those homes. Tom Clark of Avera has graciously agreed to allow a construction access directly from Foster to the site per their request. We have gone the extra mile. I'm pleased to announce to you tonight that we have secured the upfront financing totaling two-point-eight million dollars for the infrastructure development from the Reed Fund and Dakota Resources. This will allow us to move the project forward. Affordable housing has been a key topic in our community for many years. It's been pointed to as one of the things that is deterring our growth. Employees can't move to our community if they can't find affordable housing. When it comes to housing, the voices we listen to are often coming from business and industry. I'd like to call to your attention the letter from Brian Hunt in your packet. Brian currently serves as president of Mitchell Area Manufacturers Association. He was going to be here tonight to testify, but had a, a situation arise that prevented him from doing so. You also have a letter in your packet from Mr. Bruce Akeley, CEO of Trail King. Due to the change of venue, Bruce was not able to join us by telephone tonight. This is an important decision for our community. We aren't doing this for us as individuals or a certain neighborhood. Like you, we're not taking this decision lightly. We are pursuing this as part of the support system for our entire community and in the spirit of growth. We want people to move to Mitchell. We want our current businesses to be able to grow their workforce and their bottom lines. We want it, we want new community amenities and service- We want it, we want new community amenities and services. We want a community that thrives and grows, not a town that turns its back on tremendous opportunity in favor of the status quo. And we want to demonstrate to the 2,000-plus participants in Forward 2040 and business and industry that we, the leadership of this community, are listening when they say affordable housing is critical to the quality of life in our community. This is a tremendous gift to our community. We will grab onto it, celebrate it with great gratitude, or we will deny the future residents, young families, and young people the same opportunity that many of us have enjoyed. A nice home in a nice neighborhood at an affordable price. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Others want to speak to this?
Good evening. My name is Mary Pranger, and I live on East Eighth Avenue. I first would like to clear up a little misunderstanding. The neighbors on East Eighth Avenue have men have been mentioned as opposed neighbors of the Ridgeview Development. I would like to think of us as concerned neighbors. Concerned about the traffic, concerned of what will come on to the corner of Eighth and Foster Street, and concerned of the day of the drainage. These items are items that we have been addressing since the very first day, and we still feel the need to look into these items as they are major concerns of this project. When we received notice of the new 90-plus home development going in across the street, were we a little rattled? Absolutely. Mostly because we received the notice on Tuesday, January 21st. The notice had to be signed and handed into Neil Putnam by Friday, January 24th, and the first planning and zoning meeting to vote on the development was Monday, January 27th. We did not have much time to try and talk to the neighbors and get their thoughts together before going to the planning and zoning committee. When we went door-to-door and visited with people on both sides of development, we became more concerned as people shared with us their traffic concerns and the water problems that they are dealing with today. We have had meetings with Tom Clark and Mark and Jeff and Clinton Powell on these concerns, and we really do greatly appreciate that. But sometimes we feel our ideas are just not heard. Just this past Thursday, we did meet as the request of the city council, which we appreciate very much, hoping that we could come together and find a way to add a road out to Foster Street West from the development in phase one. This is a huge concern as the people going in and out of this development will have to drive close to four blocks just to get into development. There is a road in phase two, but we are told that that could be anywhere from five to 20 years. So until then, four blocks down Eighth, four blocks up, same on Bridle Drive, four blocks. When we sat down for the meeting this past Thursday, we were informed we had 30 minutes before the press release and MTI. Jeff did have some ideas for us, four different ways the road would not work. Not cost-effective, not cost-effective, not cost-effective, and the lots would have unusual sizes. Out of 21 acres in that development, there should be a way to help the traffic flow just a little bit better. When I was going door-to-door on Bridle Drive, there was an older gentleman who said to me, "I really appreciate what you're doing, but you are wasting your time." And I said to him, "Why would you say that?" He replied, "This development is going in the way they want it, and you're not going to change that." I am thankful that we do have made some changes, which I really think will enhance this project. I also am very proud of my neighbors standing up and not letting go of the concerns that we all feel need to be still addressed. So before you vote tonight on this zoning, which we'll also approve of the development as it is today, please consider looking into this development a little deeper. Make sure that we have checked off all the options to make the traffic flow better, that the corner of Eighth and Eighth and Foster blends in with the surrounding neighborhood, and worst yet, to make sure that the drainage can handle 90-plus rooftops and driveways when we get a six- or eight-inch rain. Let's not cause more water damage, or worse yet, sewer damage to the people that have lived next to this development for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Kathy Wire. I live across the street from the planned development. Section 10, 9-1 PUD requirements of existing planning and zoning regulations states that a planned unit development must be so designed in its space allocation, orientation, texture, materials, landscaping, and other features as to produce an environment of stable and desirable character, complementing the design and values of the surrounding neighborhood, and showing such unusual merit as to reflect credit upon the developer and upon the community. There has been some misconception in the local media that MADC has been bending over backward to accommodate requests from the neighbors. Other reports state that we are opposed to the development. We do not stand here opposed to the project or opposed to the location. There have been many voices of support for this project, all these letters, and we are not opposing them. Our first request for a design change was to change the 60-foot lots along Eighth Street to 80-foot lots for the entire length of Eighth Street. That is in compliance to City Ordinance 10-9-1. While we are grateful that the design for Ridgeview on Foster has seen some changes for the from the first time we saw their plan, what we're seeing is that MADC has not been addressing compromise requests from the neighbors. They are simply agreeing to follow existing city ordinances. This corresponds with the MADC donation of the lots along Eighth Street to Mitchell Tech. Many of the homes in that neighborhood are beautiful Mitchell Tech homes. While Mr. Vox on the radio presented this in the light of agreeing to requests from neighbors, it is simply aligning the design to existing city ordinances. And yes, the excellent idea to include Mitchell Tech in the project came from a neighbor. The compromises we have requested from the beginning and continue to request are: street access into the development from Foster Street in Phase One, close off Nersia Drive from Eighth Street. It is unreasonable to plan for traffic to drive almost a quarter of a mile east and then turn south before they can navigate to their houses within the development. The developers obviously see the need for access off Foster Street as it is named Ridgeview on Foster, and there is access designed in Phase Two, but that won't be for another five to 20 years. Please put it in Phase One. Subarea A in Phase One can be designed, excuse me, be designed for a single-family or twin homes, is what we are requesting. Voting yes this evening on this zoning opens development to lodging houses or multifamily dwellings of up to 24 units. No further discussion needed. In the last council meeting, Tom Clark stated, "We are not asking to put up multifamily housing," and yet it is in the proposed ordinance language for tonight. These options do not blend into and are not appropriate for this residential neighborhood. So far, this is, as Planning and Zoning Chair Jay Larson said, "A tabletop design," as no fieldwork has been done. None of the designs we have received have been to scale. Drainage has not been addressed. Access for Northwestern Energy to the power poles along the backyards of bridal acre homes has not been addressed. If subarea A is not to be planned or developed until a later date, then include it in Phase Two. There are too many reasons this design does not work. Please deny or table this request and wait until the entire parcel of land is available for development. Thank you.
My name is Pam Bathke, and I live in the Firestone Heights neighborhood. As stated, there is a short list of issues tied to the design of the development that continue to be a concern, including the street access being proposed and the permitted and conditional uses for subarea A. These are not new issues. They have been a concern since the since the first planning and zoning meeting on January 27th, and a review of the packet for that date and the response forms will confirm that. Those issues remain unaddressed, and we ask to have continued dialogue to reach agreement on them. For those individuals that state they don't, they just don't want affordable housing in their backyard and will do whatever they can to kill it, I will state again, as I have stated several times throughout this process, I have no issue with the concept of affordable housing. To elaborate, my husband and I lived in low-income housing right here in Mitchell for the first five years of our marriage. Not just affordable housing, low-income housing. I was in college and my husband was a cement truck driver. We had our first child and raised her through her toddler years while living in low-income housing. I not only know the value of affordable housing, but I have personally benefited from it. It's not the concept I am against, but the design of this particular development. And as a property owner, within a short distance of the development, I have a right to state my opinion and a right to be heard. Aside from the design issues, we still feel in the dark on certain aspects of the project that we would like explained in more detail. For example, how is the financing for the homeowners going to work such that affords deep discounts on the monthly payments yet not leave the homeowner homeowners susceptible to foreclosure? The developers say they have multiple funding streams and grants available. Wonderful. Please share those details with us because we have talked with local bankers and others involved in affordable housing, and they stand right alongside us and remaining unclear as to how this model does everything it is purported to do. Another area I would like to understand is which of the entities owned or managed by Clinton Powell and Angie Borsma will be involved in this project and how. Shelter, the proposed developer, touts being the future of attainable housing on its website. Lynchpin Corporation, also founded by both Clinton and Angie, also touts attainable housing projects on its website. Will Bros Engineering, Clinton's employer, be involved? How will ID8 Architecture, owned by Angie, who touts a background in construction work, be involved? Similar concerns have already surfaced in Armor with their school board and a proposed school addition that Clinton and Angie are involved in. We would like to understand their intentions for our town. Can any of you council members say you understand the details on the financing, along with what role each affiliated entities will have? My husband and I are both successful small-business owners. The reason we have gotten to where we are today is through hard work, logic, persistence, and informed decision-making. We ask that the council tonight perform the same due diligence. There are many moving parts to this project. We have made some headway in working with the Development Corp. and Shelter, but we would ask for your support in working through our final concerns. Please table this issue tonight so as a community, we are afforded more time to get our hands around these remaining issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clinton Powell, Shelter Community Housing Corporation. I'll take this opportunity to guess to address a couple of the questions that just got asked. Shelter Community Housing Corporation is the nonprofit corporation that is proposed to help with the development by bundling together homeowner financing for this project. Shelter Community Housing Corporation is the only involvement that Clinton Powell or Angie Borsma proposed to have on the project. And so the discussion on Lynchpin, while I feel is inappropriate to this discussion to to fully address that, Lynchpin is is a for-profit corporation that is set up specifically to help with builders' risk insurance in places where Shelter has to construct homes on their own because there aren't other builders available. That's not true in Mitchell. There are a multitude of builders available, and that's why we're going through the builder's RFP process. So Bros Engineering, who is my employer, has no involvement with this project either. I think everybody's been really clear that all of the civil engineering associated with this project is being done by Jeff and the folks over at ESPN, who've done a great job with what they're putting together. So I wanted to address that real quick. The second thing I wanted to address is is subarea A, the corner of Eighth and Foster. Shelter Community Housing Corporation has every intent of putting out a RFP for that area to come up with design concepts. We've invited anybody that wants to be involved with development of that RFP or selection of that RFP to be involved with that process. We're not ready to go through that process yet. We would anticipate that that process will probably happen in early summer. To this point, we haven't seen any interest from anybody to be involved with that with that process, but that'll continue to be something that we that we leave open to the public to be involved with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Clark, Regional President of Eric Queen of Peace. First, I'd like to thank you for practicing social distancing. Wash your hands.
You got you got close to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not close enough. Okay.
There you go.
So again, I'm Tom Clark, Regional President with Eric Queen of Peace. I really don't have a lot to add. You've heard me speak at length about the need for attainable housing in this community that's supported by, when you talk to all of our major employers in town. And so this is really, the the need for this housing is really unquestioned at this point in time. And the way we view this, this is really a once-in-a-generation-type project. This is not just simply a housing addition. This is a housing addition that can actually shape the future of this community for generations to come. And that's one of the reasons we're so excited about it and so passionate about it. And I know there's a lot of questions about zoning or about the drainage, about street access, and certainly those conversations continue. But really, nothing in this project can proceed any further until we get past this hurdle, which is the zoning change. Once the zoning change is complete, you know, it'll all ultimately come back because you'll have the the final plat design, the drainage plans, and all that stuff that still has to come back for your approval. So I really don't see, as we're here sitting here tonight, that this request, asking for a yay vote to approve this zoning request, is out of line. We're simply proposing to put a residential housing area in the middle of a residential housing area. We're not asking to put in a feedlot. We're not asking to put in multifamily apartments. We're not asking to put in a production fills facility or a hazardous waste facility. Homes. Homes in a residential area in our community. And since this is the second vote for approving residential zoning, I would say please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address counsel? Okay, we retain a motion.
Well, this does have to go back up to the planning and zoning, I believe, with the new plat.
The plats.
They'll they'll request drainage. They'll look at streets. They can put condition uses on it. They can do a lot there at that. I know I'm not passing a buck, but this is only for zoning, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Allen to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabres. Further discussion? Anybody else wish to address it further?
I'd, and I would just like to thank everybody for for coming up and speaking and making this a a process that there has been input. I understand maybe not the exact result that some people have wanted, but the the input is what makes municipal and state governments and other things work, being able to have the the meeting and hear. Being able to have the meeting and hear concerns, I was absent from the last meeting, but I was impressed with receiving four potential outlines tonight. Not all of them look favorable to me. They might look favorable to some people. Some of them might end up being close to what the final design is, and some of them might not be. But I want to reiterate, this is just the zoning part, and questions on drainage and those types of things all still need to be addressed, and they'll be addressed through the process once it's zoned correctly.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all those are fair to the most significant, say nay? Opposed, nay? Motion carried?
Abstain, please.
Oh, one abstention, Mr. Barrington. Okay. Motion to adopt ordinance 2020-02.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience want to address this? Roll call, please.
Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dosher.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. First reading on ordinance 020-03, supplemental appropriations. Ms. Ellin.
I hope everybody took enough time to read through the extensive staff report that I gave for you this time. I will walk everybody through a little bit about what we had for the overview, and this is the first reading, so you will have the opportunity to, if you have any changes that you want to make before adoption at the next meeting. As you know, we always wait to do our annual supplemental appropriations until we actually close out the year from the previous fiscal year. That was completed when Michelle, the finance officer, finished her annual report, so we felt like we could go ahead and move forward with where we were at. If you walked through the beginning of my overview staff report, if you take our revenue minus expenditures, you can see the difference there. We have some SRF funds that were received that we need to transfer into another fund. They were put into the general fund instead of a sewer fund. And then we have a big grant for the Sanborn Bridge where we already spent the money, but we haven't got the revenue in yet. And then we also had revenue that we took out of cash from 2018 for 2019 projects. And when you balance all of that together, it leaves you with about 1.7 million with our requested supplements. We have 1.1, so we're within that amount. We still feel that it's good to leave some balance in there, not knowing what's gonna happen this year, and also because some of this is an estimation, looking at what those budget reports show. As far as individual recommendations, most of these reflect projects that were started in 2019, and they weren't completed, so those projects are carrying forward to the next year. Otherwise, it would be items that came up after the 2020 budget was already approved. We, or I go through every single departmental budget to make sure that, first of all, that the project was actually in the 2019 budget that we're transferring to 2020. And then we also want to make sure that their overall departmental budget has funds left that we can transfer from one year to another. One thing that I did a little bit different this year, you'll see, you know, we separated these out by fund, so you can see that. And then I also stated on each individual line where that funding is coming from. You can see we had a, just a bill for some of our auditing and financial reporting that was not complete. We had an employee retirement and some transition with a new office coming in. We had a project not completed out of 2019 for municipal buildings, information technology. This is a mistake on my part, because I made it look like this entire 45,000 was for security doors in City Hall and camera additions, but it's not just City Hall. City Hall is one of the facilities that we're adding in. We have other facilities that we're still completing the door hardware for. So I should've stated that more clearly. I don't think that was very clear when you looked at it. Also, in addition for the hardware, we are also converting the point-of-sale systems in the Corn Palace as well as the sports complex. The new systems that we're getting have way better financial reporting. Oh, and cemetery golf, I mean golf course. I almost forgot Kevin over there. It comes with better financial reporting for us, and then it also adds the ability to do inventory control. And then as far as concessions in the Corn Palace as well as the sports complex, we actually have the ability to track or tie in the staffing that are tied to that as well, so you can have better daily monitoring on what your cash flow is. The costs to do those are much less than what they used to be, and actually, now we get much better software maintenance and support, which was something that Kevin had been experiencing problems with at the golf course.
And we did that as a group across?
Yes. And, yes, that's the other major part, is that now we have a standard PLS system across the city, and that software program allows, like Michelle, we're adding as a, like a super administrator on all of these, so we have an auditing function on each of those entities as well. So, we're excited to see that go into place. That's included in there. We have a software module that did not get installed in 2019 that we'll be doing in 2020. Yep, in code, yep. The dump truck, they just had some remaining work to do on that that didn't get done last year. You'll see a lot of these noted that the weather was kind of a problem. If you notice at the end of the year, we had quite a bit of rain, and it just caused us to not be able to complete a lot of our projects. As far as public works nuisance property line, this is for, we have the demolition of the pawn shop on Main Street. We front that cost, and then, as you know, the council's approved a repayment agreement, so we just have to have that available. And then we also know that there's some estimated costs that the city has on the Crafty Fox building as well, for the tuck pointing in windows, right? Okay, good deal. I, by no means think this is, like, all of the public nuisances. We could have more that come up. At that point, the council's gonna have to deal with those when those come up. Street and sidewalk, you'll see a number of items. We had some sidewalk projects that were listed in the 2019 plan that didn't get done. And then we also had some that were delayed due to weather. The gravel base, they started that crushing project in December, and so they're carrying that forward to 2020. And then you guys are, I think, aware of too, that we talked about the delay with the parking lot by the VFW. I know Kyle's commented on that several times to council. Sanborn, though, should be known. We didn't get quite as far as we thought we would in the first year, so we're just moving those budget funds to the second year. It's still anticipated those projects will be done in 2020.
And that meeting's tomorrow night to talk about the next phase? Is that still on?
It is at this point, and we are going to be live streaming it. We moved it to council chambers, 'cause that way we can do the broadcast as well. So we would encourage anyone, I'm gonna have the YouTube channel up, so if you have questions, you can either submit questions by email to me, you could also text them, and you can submit a comment on the YouTube livestream as well. So, and then we'll have it archived like we do any other projects, and it will be linked to that site for future. So, we would encourage anybody that doesn't want to attend, take advantage of that method. And Borough Street, again, we just had some final landscaping, finishing items that didn't get completed this year. The next one, there's several projects in professional services for storm drainage. These were previously in a bunch of different budgets. We've actually moved those all into the storm drainage budget, because they are all related to that. These are all projects that already have agreement numbers, 'cause the council's already approved them, but we get billed as those projects are completed. So you'll, this is for the remainder of the project that's already approved. And then storm drainage, it's Sanborn, East Central Drainage, Kibby Ditch, that's been in the budget at least the last year, it might've been two years, for the staking that did not get completed yet. Cemetery, there was just some, the repairs and maintenance for the headstones just didn't get completed in 2019. The expansion in paving, those are really due to the weather changes. We just didn't get all the paving done that we needed to get done, so those are getting rolled into this year's budget. They were included in your, I can't remember if we awarded the bids, or we just did the notice to the bid recently, just did the advertising. So we included those in the ads that went out. The next one, the other financing uses, this is money that we transfer out of the general fund to other funds for operating purposes. The first one is transfer out of general fund to the water fund, and that is for the remaining $35,000 in the budget for boat docks. It used to be in park and rec. We're putting that into the lake budget.
Correct.
And so this cash is coming from unspent 2019 general fund cash to fund it, because there was not cash left over in park and rec to fund it. So we're taking that out of general fund. This transfer to general fund for the Corn Palace, that's the cash that we need in order to complete the basketball hoops that will be done this year, and the council took that out of contingency, so there isn't gonna be cash available in the Corn Palace, so we have to take general fund cash to fund that one. In park and rec, they held back on some of the, replacing the deck chairs in the outdoor pool, because they wanted to make sure they get hit budget, so they are just using what they didn't get done last year. Cadwell Concessions, this would be the only one that's listed that is not coming out of previous year's cash. It's anticipated that there will be revenue that comes in to offset these costs for concessions. You'll see a number of items. I think one of the questions that I got was the capital improvements, the $10,000, they're gonna be adding the small three sink.
Three comp sinks to be able to have certain, the South Dakota Department of Health requires them to have a three compartment sink in order to have certain concessions out there, so they're going to add that to be able to serve those concessions.
Right.
Yeah.
Then we've got capital buildings in parks to finish this Sandy Beach sidewalk, and then we also have the day camp playground. And supervision, the $18,000 for signs, that's not coming out of just general reserves. That's the money that the city received from Pepsi for the sponsorship of the slide. They also provided some signage funds, so Nathan is asking that we add that in, so they can spend those monies this year. So, that one explains that. As far as entertainment tax fund, that is for the balance of the Corn Palace Plaza. We are not in a position to announce it yet, but we do have, we do believe that there is a sponsorship coming in on the stage, but we need to be able to have the spending capabilities, and that probably would not be reimbursed for probably a year until the...
It's substantial unless the stock market keeps flopping.
So, we're waiting for it to things to go back positive on that one again. Community Services Fund, all of the items that are listed here are for grant funds. They've been going through a very drawn-out process with the state to get environmental reviews done, so we are finally getting that project bid this year, but it was in last year's budget, and then others were matching funds needed and grants that they are receiving. Water Fund, we don't typically, in the past, we have not done supplements to our enterprise fund, so this is new this year. We're doing this just as a better way of tracking. We had a lot of projects that changed in the last year, made it very difficult for Michelle and I when we were going back through where we were, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what projects are actually included in this year's budget. So you'll see those listed again. Again, most of this has already started. You guys have already approved the water distribution model software, and then that's for the software and training. We've got East Central Drainage, that we've already talked about plenty. Some of these, as you saw, they just couldn't get done, because the water flows were so high in wastewater collection, so you'll see that too. So, those were items that were budgeted last year, they just didn't get done. Sanitation Fund, this one, I might have to ask Kyle, 'cause I can't remember. It's a portion of the remaining contract amount for dependable recycling. There was a reduction that was made off of that total because of the service that kind of ended at the end there. So we did get a reduction on that, but that will take over the rest of that. We had landfill, they were able to, we had to change a stellar amount. That was the other one, Michelle, that I couldn't remember, so that we changed after we left. They are getting a grant to offset some of that cost, so we'll have revenue coming in too, but that will be the full cost of the total project for that one. You can see that here's 20% of the grant is 118, and then we're using the 450. And they were able to buy a used compactor last year, right? So that's how we were able to, no, we bought a used last year.
2018.
Yeah, 2018. So that's how we had the funds available. And then the last one is the Corn Palace, and that's for the installation of the basketball hoops. $72,000 is the cost. I did say that we're taking $68,000 out of the general fund to put into the Corn Palace to fund this. That's because I knew there was at least, what are the differences? $4,000 in other money received. Kevin did tell us that there's likely other revenue coming, or other sponsorship money coming in for that. So, we'll look at where we are at the end of the year, and we just won't transfer the difference. So whatever we receive, we'll hold back on that sponsorship amount, so. Are there any overall questions on the supplements? I give you way too much detail if there's no questions. No?
No, there was a question on one of the...
We're asking the basketball installation, and, well, we'll be closing, so they should be able to get in here.
Yeah, they had to wait, and we will be closing the facility tomorrow at noon, roughly, so...
Deb, what is the timeframe again? I can't remember what you had for installation.
We had the circus coming up in April. Do you want to speak to some of them?
Sure, I just, that is scheduled to begin on Monday, the 13th. They have 10 days, and it'll be completed April 22nd.
Who's doing the work?
Didn't they? Pitts got the bid.
No, I think Mueller got it.
Oh, Mueller. You're right, you're right.
Mueller has it, yep. And then they sublet it for, one group is building the framework, one is doing the baskets, and they're pulling it all together.
Good.
So, it'll be a substantial project, and the, giving you the idea, the brakes to the right and to the left, that's where the baskets will come down.
Right here.
Yes. And they'll swing to the north and to the south.
Oh, okay.
Instead of upward like these.
Oh, this way.
They swing this way.
Okay.
Yep. And, so they'll be out of the way of the speakers and the scoreboard.
Right. We had to wait till we were done using the palace and the course.
The palace has opened up recently.
Yeah. Yes, in the recent events, more availability's come available.
Doug, I've had some other questions about, in light of the Corn Palace closing, the Oak Ridge Boys, and some of those...
Do we want to finish the ordinance first, 'cause you want to go through all of them? Doug, and then maybe afterwards, you could get an update on the Corn Palace events after they do the ordinance? Okay. Is there any other questions on the ordinance that I can answer?
Further questions? Any need a motion?
Move approval, first reading of supplemental approval.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. McCardle. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those are fair to the most significant, say nay?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Normally, we'd be done and adjourned, but we have some questions regarding the Corn Palace, so Mr. Greenway, if you'll come back up and speak to those.
So first off, yeah, thanks for the question. It's not a, for any event center right now, as, you know, Major League Baseball, the NBA, hockey, NCAA, basketball, all those things, and we're a small part of that, but it's big for Mitchell. Just a rough figure this morning, I calculated, we're probably about $90,000 in gross revenue in March and April alone that we would've brought in for the events we were hosting. That included the youth wrestling last Saturday, the Oak Ridge Boys from Thursday has been, we've been waiting on that, because we thought we could get it rescheduled, and we did, for the Wednesday of festival week. So, April 26th, excuse me, August 26th, yes, Wednesday, August 26th, has been rescheduled, so those folks should know, they should just hold on to those tickets, and that'll be a nice way to kick off that event. Wing and Palooza on the 21st, which is this Saturday, canceled until the fall, just a number of other things. You know, the circus just recently hasn't even been announced yet, but they have canceled that. We're looking at a September date for the circus to come in. You know, some private events that were booked here have been canceled, and most are being looked at other dates, which is good. They're just waiting to see what happens and when this blows over. And it's safe to bring groups together again, but in the, you know, essence of caution, we're moving those events along.
And are you kind of holding off, like, the prom for the high school? Has that been canceled yet?
I don't have any insight on that yet.
We would just encourage everybody who's wanting to stay up to date on any programs or facilities or other things for the city, be checking the Corn Palace and the city's website. We're also sharing all those to our social media pages. If you want to get updates on cancellations, we've, at least with city facilities, we also have an alert system that you can subscribe to and get to any notifications that way as well.
Show Core hasn't been canceled yet either, has it?
I don't have any insight on that yet.
And the intent, as I told you earlier, is as of tomorrow about noon, this facility will close and run along with the school schedule, so we'll see how that goes. Okay? We're adjourned.[1788.65]